So Oliver, are you gonna introduce the code updates this morning?
Yes, I'll just make a good morning chair and good morning councillors. For the record, Oliver Jaco, Community Planning. Yes, I'll just make a quick remark and turn it over to Susan Ellinger and consultant team, Elizabeth, and I know Steve Frost is also on the line. Councillors, this is a continuation of the Clark County Housing Option Study and Action Plan, implementation of that work. Following your hearing last July, you councillors provided us a list of questions, including those that came from following the hearing and we are here to present what we have done since then. I can say that I appreciate all that have been working on this to get us to where we are today. There are a couple of issues that will come up. It's going to raise some process question and we will dialogue with council to see what we need to do. One is some of the changes significant enough process wise to take it back to the planning commission. That decision we will discuss when we see, when the council see the proposal before you. So let me just quickly turn it over to Susan and Elizabeth. I don't know who is leading first, perhaps you, Susan, and then Elizabeth will take it from there. Thank you, councillors. We are here to also answer questions. I have other staff, Jose, Amy, Wuthen, and I believe our legal counsel is also online. So with that, I will turn it over to Susan and Elizabeth.
Thank you, Oliver. I just want to introduce Elizabeth Decker with Jet Planning, who's going to be outlining some of the changes that, and refinements to the proposed code that have been developed since the hearing with you in July of 2023. Thanks, Elizabeth.
Great. Thank you, Susan and Oliver and the commissioners for having me here, or councillors for having me here this morning. We're glad to be back with you to share what we've been doing to refine the proposal on the middle housing and smaller single family code updates. As we know, there's a big interest in moving forward with some housing options. So next slide, please. We have a brief project overview, just to get us back into this project, you know, January 2024. So it's been a few months since we last talked about it. And spend most of our time talking through the recommended code refinements that we've developed with help from our forum members. And then talk about next steps. As Oliver alluded to, we've been discussing the best way to review these code refinements as part of the adoption process and move those forward for your consideration. Next, please. And then next, so in terms of the project overview, to refresh your memory how this project came about and what we're working, what we're seeking to implement. The housing code updates for middle housing and smaller single family come out of the Housing Options Study and Action Plan, which was adopted back in May of 2022. And these are the phase one of code updates that were recommended for short term implementation as adopted by the council. And these apply within the unincorporated Vancouver UGA, so urban areas only. They don't affect rural areas, area, so intended for areas where greater density and variety of housing is encouraged and planned for. And the goal behind these amendments is to support creation of housing that's affordable to low and moderate income households. So help to provide some options that we're not currently seeing in the market. Next, please. And as we scoped these updates, they're really focused on the R1 zones, which are what were previously called the single family residential districts. And with the introduction of a greater variety of middle housing proposed, part of these updates would rename them the low density residential districts. But that's what we're looking at. There's five of those zones. R120, R110, R17.5, R16 and R15. And together, they make up most of the buildable land within the Vancouver urban growth area. So they really represent a great opportunity to expand housing opportunities broadly across the county. And the code updates are intended to enhance feasibility of both smaller, single family detached homes. We heard that there's a real interest in that. Both from buyers as well as from developers, they've got some plans and some ideas that could be deployed if those smaller scale homes were permitted. But then also to expand opportunities for different types of housing that have been much more limited in the past. So collectively, we call these middle housing. And for the purposes of this project, we've been looking at accessory dwelling units, ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage housing, some refinements to the existing code, adding a new option called compact lots, which is a similar scale to cottage housing, but different site orientation as well as townhouses. So next, please. And in terms of what these updates look like, when we took those concepts and mapped them, they affect five different chapters of the code as listed here, with the majority of the changes in the single family residential districts and the special uses and standards. That's where the details for each of these types of housing is detailed. And then we translate, you know, rather than talk through each code reference and subsection, we translate those to six key themes of what these code updates would accomplish in terms of using land more efficiently. That's mostly looking at some adjustments to the minimum watt sizes and other dimensional standards to allow more homes on the same amount of area. More housing variety and more neighborhoods. That's when we're looking at these different types of middle housing as well as the smaller, single family, so that there's more choices. Maintaining neighborhood scale speaks to setting the dimensional standards for those new middle housing types such that they can be built with similar dimensional standards and bulk massing as comparable, single family homes in those same neighborhoods, similar setbacks and height limits and other tools like that. Clustered development options speaks to the cottage refining the county's existing cottage housing as well as introducing that new compact lot development option. And then five, the off-street parking adjustments talks about adjusting the different off-street parking ratios as well as where it needs to be located for each of these different types of middle housing to make it more feasible. And then finally, streamlining the permitting process speaks to how these new middle housing types and smaller, single family will be reviewed to make sure that we're, you know, truly permitting in an effective manner, the types of housing that we're looking to see built. So we've been working a lot with our peers in community development on this project to come up with some workable systems. Next, please. And these code updates are coming out of a, let's see, about an eight, almost a, you know, 15, 16 month process at this point. We started on the code concepts back in fall of 2022. We engaged our forum participants and the representatives that were engaged in the forum were members of the planning commission, members of our original, excuse me, our original advisory group for developing the Housing Options and Study Action Plan, as well as members of the Development Engineering and Advisory Board. So we issued an invitation for all those groups to be represented in our forum and worked with them through the code amendment process. We also had a public open house to help refine those code amendments. And we're now in the adoption process, have gone to planning commission, had some discussions with them in a hearing. They recommended approval and we came to you for a hearing back in July. The weather was a little bit nicer back then. And we heard that there were still some questions. And so we've been spending the past six months refining these amendments, talking, going back to our forum group and talking with them about how we could address some of your questions as well as other questions raised by those forum participants. Next, please. So this code refinement process that we've been engaged in for the last six months was based on your direction and we convened those two additional meetings of our forum members, those original stakeholders, held those back in October and November. And we began with the original questions that we were directed by council to address and also asked stakeholders, you know, what else is out there? You know, we heard a lot in the public hearing about, you know, this code is estimates varied. You know, is it 90%? Is it 98% ready? But whatever that outstanding percentage was, we really wanted to use this process to hear what we needed to do for that last 5%, that last 2% to sort of tie it all together and make sure that this was a workable process that really was able to support the types of housing we're all looking for. And meanwhile, it's a very exciting time to be a planner, especially if you're interested in middle housing and planning, middle housing, because the state's been working on middle housing as well. And so there's been a parallel process happening that we didn't know of when we started this process. It's just because it's the topic on everyone's minds and, you know, across the state, folks are looking for more housing types. Since the state has been pursuing middle housing, there is, sorry, excuse me, the state developed a draft middle housing ordinance to implement some recent legislation, HB 1110. And this process does not, at this time, directly affect Clark County. It's not a mandate that's coming in the short term, but it does represent the emerging best practices and is really going to set the tone for many jurisdictions within Clark County. And as the rules evolve, there could be some ways that it does more directly affect the county. So we really see this as a tool to understand what's happening in the state. And it just gives us some other ideas, some other input that we can look at and sort of check some of our ideas against. So that was an additional tool that happened during the six month refinement process. That is still in a draft. We're expecting a final, a final draft in about one week from now. So, you know, we can, we can check again and see what's been refined, but it was a resource that we had. Next, please. So to get into the individual code refinements, we started, we really wanted to prioritize our work. We didn't want to open everything back up. But based on the direction and the question, the key questions that came up during the public hearing and the questions from the councillors, we started with five priority issues that we wanted to address about the height for detached accessory dwelling units. We heard a lot of interest in increasing that. We heard a lot, probably the biggest issue during the hearings that we heard feedback about was the design standards that were proposed for the compact lots. Also had some questions about the narrow driveway standards that would be permitted with these compact lots as well as the existing narrow lot standards. Questions about the proposed changes to the parking standards for those narrow lots. Those are typically those smaller, single family detached as well as townhouse developments. So narrow lot is the code term for those and they have some additional standards. And then also some questions about adjusting lot coverages that with the variety of dimensional standards being changed, that some additional lot coverage could really help make it more feasible to develop some, some desired housing types. So we started with those five and that's where we had the most discussion. And as part of that, we had these additional issues F through M that came up in our discussion that in, some of them directly relate to these others are just, you know, part of the overall code package, but we're just part of that, you know, outstanding 5% or so that the forum members identified as priorities. And through our review, we'll talk about our recommendations and what's in the refinements. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So we started right in on the detached ADU heights. And I think this was a pretty easy issue for us to discuss with the forum members. We really heard that there's interest to allow all ADUs to go up to the building height, the same building height that's permitted in the zone. Right now, that's 35 feet in all of the R1 zones. And the existing ADU, sorry, to back up a little, the existing ADU standards allow detached as well as attached ADUs. And for the detached, they can be up to 800 square feet and they can go up to 25 feet. But attached units, since they're part of the same structure as the primary dwelling, can go up to that 35 foot height limit. So we'd, the initial draft back in July included an increase to the area up to 1,000 square feet, but maintained the same height limits. And that's what's set by the state and what we're, what the county is required to meet. We also added in, there was some discussion about whether garage space, as you see in this example with the garage on the first floor, whether that garage space counts for the 1,000 square feet and clarified in the code that it doesn't. So the question was, can those detached ADUs go up to 35 feet the same as the attached ones? And given the scope of the changes with multiple different middle housing types permitted that would all allow multiple units up to 35 feet, we felt that allowing a detached ADU to go up to 35 feet would also be appropriate. And so that's the recommended code refinement with this, with this next draft of code. So next issue, please. Oh, just some examples of ADUs over, over garage space. So, you know, to date, we really haven't seen a lot of these three story ADUs. That's what 35 feet would permit, but there are some options. You know, it's one of those things, if you haven't permitted it, it's not really possible to see it out in the world yet. So we'll see how this, this takes off, but it does allow some additional flexibility. Next, please. So as I mentioned, this was the biggest issue that we dealt with, that we heard feedback about relating to the design standards for the compact lot development. So the compact lot development was an, an option that is included in the code. It's a new set of code parameters. It's meant to be a, an alternative to the cottage housing and it allows smaller, single family homes at the same scale as cottage development. So twice the underlying density of the existing zone. And it, so something similar to this picture, that's a recent development in the county. I didn't measure the square footage, but it allows in increased density for each of these, these projects on a lot that is about three acres or smaller. So meant to be more of an infill opportunity or for particular sites that are challenging to develop under the existing standards. And it allows these homes to be oriented on more of a traditional street orientation rather than the clustered orientation of a cottage. And so right now, that's not an option in any of the R1 zones. And so therefore, there's no design standards for these homes or really any other types of single family homes in the county. We don't have, the existing county code doesn't have a lot of design standards about what the facades need to look like and, and how different parts of the facades need to relate to each other. So with this proposal for compact lots and the increased density, there were three key design standards recommended that we didn't want to focus on architectural design. The idea was more to focus on the site design and functionality as it impacts the public realm. So crossing the sidewalk, access to the street. The, all of that can create potential conflicts for pedestrians as well as passing traffic, creating connections between the homes and the street to promote community cohesion. And so the three standards that were recommended in the draft were a main entrance requirement. So front door facing to the street and directly accessible. The garage width being limited to 50% of the front facade so that it doesn't dominate. And then managing the driveway impacts to address those potential conflicts, conflicts. So, and the draft code had offered three different options, whether it's a narrow driveway that's 10 feet wide, sharing a driveway. So you're pairing with your neighbor. Or arranging the driveway so that there's 20 feet in between each driveway. Or of course, providing alley access. So next, please. And we heard a lot of feedback that those were challenging standards to meet. And there are concerns that they could really make this new option, the compact lots, not feasible to build, which would kind of defeat the purpose of these new standards. And so the refinement in this next draft that we worked through with our forum members, the proposal is to maintain that main entrance requirement, that that still is an important standard and is pretty feasible to meet. We got some assist here from the, as I mentioned, the state model ordinance. They also addressed this issue and were made, in the model ordinance, made a recommendation to balance home and, you know, living and garage space with a standard allowing garages up to 60% of the width of the front of the lot frontage. And so the lot frontage is greater than the building frontage in most cases. So that's an increase. And then from 50% that we were considering to the 60%. So we felt comfortable recommending that change to the garage width since that's going to be the standard statewide. And then we recommended in this refined draft to remove the requirement for driveway techniques. And instead, as we, as we'll talk about, keeping the requirement for guest parking as part of the narrow lot standards so that there's flexibility, you don't have to do, meet a specific driveway technique as long as those parking minimums are met. And then we also heard another piece from our forum members that they felt that with these different standards, one other little assistance that would help them, that would help make it more feasible to build on these compact lots would be decreasing the side yard setbacks because the lot sizes are smaller. It made sense, we, you know, we understood the logic of decreasing the side yard setbacks from five feet to three feet to add a little bit more room. Makes it a little easier to meet that garage width requirement. So if there's more space on the lot. And then also to allow zero lot line configuration so that the homes can be shifted over to right on the lot side, lot line for one side and then combine those side yards on the other for a greater separation. Next, please. The next key issue that we were looking at had to do with the applicability of the narrow driveway standards. So as mentioned, narrow lots is a term in the code that has to do with any lot 40 feet or less. And, and those are typically single family attached townhouse styles as well as increasingly we're seeing these narrow, single family detached homes. And right now, those standards include some options to allow for alleys and/or shared driveways as options for access. Those standards are not required. They're just listed as options within that code section. And the proposed code added another option, what we called a 10 foot wide narrow driveway. And that just allowed for some space saving. It's a little bit less than the 12 foot standard. That's the minimum for all other residential lots. But we heard some concern that, about reading through those standards that they could be interpreted to require some of these things and that they could be overlapping and conflicting. And so that in the refined draft, we recommended some additional language that just clarifies these three options are optional. And also just to clarify how they interact with driveway standards in another code section. So the refined code there is really just a clarification, keeping them optional. And so next, please. Also with the narrow lots, another issue that we heard questions about had to do with the parking standards, the minimum parking requirements. So because these are narrower lots, it means that there's less curb frontage in front of the average, you know, most of these lots, which means less on-street parking availability. And so because that can cause spillover effects within a neighborhood into other neighborhoods, the existing standard in the code had tried to address that issue by requiring 2.5 spaces per home, which is more than the two spaces required for other, single family dwellings and offering some flexibility that those can be off-street spaces. So in the garage or the driveway, they can be on-street in front of the dwelling if there is that curb space, or they could be located in off-street common parking areas. So a small parking lot serving the development. And any combination of those could be permitted. And when we took a look at this with the initial draft code, really had some questions about that 0.5, how that, how that worked, how that was different than for other types of dwellings, how to make it more feasible, but also to address those potential spillover parking effects. So, you know, you've got guests coming over, what, you, folks visiting. So just ways to address that. And so the recommended draft introduced a two spaces per home requirement. So same as all other, single family detached homes, requiring those as off-street spaces. So being located on the lot. With an additional requirement for one shared space per three homes that needs to be located either on the street or in a common parking area. So that's with the 2.5 spaces, most developments were opting to provide a two-car garage and a, and a double wide driveway. So there were four off-street spaces, but that wasn't necessarily helping with some of the visitor issues, especially if folks have used their garages for storage and then they're parking their own cars in the driveway. Still meant that if guests were coming, they, if there was no on-street parking, there was nowhere for them to park. So we wanted to add a little more specificity in the code so that there really were some shared spaces that were located on the street or in common parking areas. Given specifically in these areas, how the narrow lots made less on-street parking available in general. Wanted to make sure there's still some minimum amount of that available. And as the, on this issue, we really did not reach a clear consensus talking to the forum. So we brought back to you some options for your further consideration. So we heard both, you know, maybe go back to the existing standard that, that it wasn't as problematic as had originally been stated. So one option is to keep the existing code, 2.5 spaces that could be provided in any of these three locations. We also heard some interest to maintain the proposed standard as written, the two spaces off-street and then one shared space for guest parking. And also some interest to further reduce, to make it just two spaces per unit with no guest parking requirement and regulate it the same as other, single family. So as we move forward with this additional, these additional work sessions and hearings, we'll be looking for your input on this issue. Because as I said, we really heard a variety of voices and we'd like to hear your voices way in on this as well. Next, please. And then the last of our initial issues was looking at lot coverage. And so in the existing code, all the R1 zones, all the lot sizes are permitted to go up to 50% lot coverage. And in the proposed code, there is, the proposed code includes reducing those minimum lot sizes by 10 to 20% as well as some changes to the setbacks. And so since the minimum lot sizes are, are proposed to be reduced, there is a corresponding proposed increase to lot coverage for the smallest of those, those lots. Those would be in the R15 and the R16 zone. So a modest increase to allow a similar size building footprint on the smaller sized lots. And we also proposed to offer a tiered structure. The code was, the proposed code allows increased lot coverage for middle housing. So the more units you have on a lot, the more additional modest increase of lot coverage would be permitted. So say like, it works out to about 5% for each additional dwelling unit proposed. And that just adds more space and flexibility to add those units that we really need. And so the refined code, we heard some questions about, you know, going back to this, that maybe those, the, the total lot coverage permitted for these smaller lots made it less feasible to build the kinds of homes that folks were looking for. So we went back and took another look at it. And coming out of that, the refined draft recommends retaining that differentiated lot coverage, that tiered structure for middle housing. But we were able to identify some additional modest increases to the R15 and the R16 zone as well as for townhouses to make those lot sizes more feasible to develop. So next, please. And this is what this looks like. And I would focus your attention mostly on the R15 category. The biggest things to come out of this is we had started at 50% is the existing code in the R15 zone had proposed to go to 60% lot coverage. And we heard is that if we could just go to 65%, there was, you know, some debate would 62 be enough? Would 63? And we said, let's, let's propose 65, make it a slightly more round number. And so that allows a similar coverage footprint. That's what you see in italics below that as the existing code. And then on compact lots, we also saw the opportunity in both the R16 and the R15 to go to 65% allowed lot coverage. And then you can see what that means in terms of coverage footprints. We can't really compare that to existing. And then you can see what that means in terms of coverage footprints. We can't really compare that to existing. Um, because again, those compact lots are are a new proposed code option. Um, and then you see that tiered lot structure carried through for the duplex and ADU and the triplex and quadplex. So there's corresponding increases um to the lot coverage for those. And then townhouses, we heard going to seventy percent um across these three zones would really support feasibility. Um, uh of developing those, since there's no side yards, um you know, you're really looking for significant lot coverage to make those work. Next please? Um, and so moving out of those, those that are top five. Um, some additional issues we wanted to run through that came up as feedback from our forum members and where we were able to reach some consensus. Um, translate to some additional refinements in the the draft code that we'll be bringing back to you. So first piece was really, um, we talked about this since the very beginning of this project, and I know that you've been talking about this as well. Has to do with the cottage area calculations. Um, and so the discussion was. Do attached garages with a cottage count towards the allowed sixteen hundred square feet um floor area or not? Um, and there was some strong interest in excluding the garages from that. And really a lot of discussion about how do we do it? Is it part of these code amendments? Is it part of the biannual code amendments? Um, so just closing the loop here to say that has been proposed, it is part of the biannual code amendments. It will be reflected in these um housing code updates. Uh, but hopefully moving forward on that biannual code amendment track um sooner because it's going to a planning commission tomorrow. So um, that just is moving forward and will be reflected in this project. Next please? Um, another question that came up during the forum, a forum member asked. If we could explore detached plexes. Um, and so right now in the code duplexes are permitted and they're. An attached structure, two units in a single, single dwelling or in a single structure. The proposed code allows expands from duplexes to triplexes and quadplexes, but also defines them as being. Two, three, or four units in a single structure. And so there was a question about, well, what if we had, you know, three or four small detached structures on a lot? Could we, and sometimes that's termed a detached triplex or detached quadplex. Um, and from talk, talking with the forum members decided this was not the top priority at this time. Um, so it's not part of the recommended draft. Um, ADUs, right with the that option for detached ADUs, you can get two detached ADUs on a lot. Um, and a cottage cluster allows for four or more detached individual dwellings. So we felt that those provided adequate options um for multiple detached structures. The, and in Washington, the state model ordinance is not recommending detached plexes. Um, though Oregon has permitted this, so it's something that you could continue to explore in the future, but it did not emerge as. An an issue with a lot of consensus to prioritize at this time. Next please? Um, and then another issue that came up that we took another look at. Um, based on the model code and some additional dis- or model ordinance and some initial discussions that we, or some additional discussions. We're taking another look at the range of middle housing that would be permitted in the R110 and the R120 zone. Um, so those zones are, have the largest minimum lot sizes currently uh and would continue to. And the approach that we took um in the initial draft was really sort of a two-tiered approach. That the, in the R110 and the R120 zones. Um, essentially up to two units were being proposed where one was previously permitted. So duplexes, two attached townhouses, um cottages and compact lots that allow twice the density. Uh, were being pro- proposed in those zones, but the triplexes, quadplexes and and more attached townhouses. Um, were not initially proposed in those zones. Taking another look at the model ordinance and the discussions that we were having with our forum, forum members. There is interest in, you know, going back and treating um the R110 and the R120 zones the same as the other three R1 zones. And so the refined proposal would expand the middle housing uses in those zones. To include triplexes, quadplexes, and up to four attached townhouses, which is the same um as is being proposed in the other R1 zones. Um, so as part of that, we proposing some minimum lot sizes that um for those triplexes and quadplexes in those zones. Um, the sixteen hundred square foot and the R120, the eighty-five hundred square foot for the R110. Those are the same minimum lot sizes proposed for a single-family home. Um, so any lot that could be developed for a single-family home could also have a duplex, a triplex, or or a quadplex. Um, subject to the same height setbacks and minimum lock and maximum lock coverage. So similar massing requirements. Um, this is really consistent with the state model ordinance that that um directs all single-family zones to be treated the same. And really saw an opportunity here to support greater equity across the county. Um, so that there weren't certain zones that were excluded from these additional opportunities. Next please? Um, with these um triplexes and quadplexes. As I mentioned, one of the priorities for the, for these code updates is to streamline the permitting process. Um, and so the proposal um. In the initial draft was to allow triplexes and quadplexes through a type-one site plan review. Right now, they have to go through a type-two, which is additional notice, additional application requirements, additional time. Um, that site plan review process is a land use review and it's separate from the building permit review. Um, and the reason why site plan review is proposed for these triplexes and quadplexes. Um, is because they can, um, with three or more units. Um, developments trigger, can trigger frontage or other public works improvements. Um, and development engineering spoke to how important it was to use the site plan review process. Uh, to make sure that those issues are addressed um and adequately covered in a fair and consistent manner. And so we heard again during the forum that, you know, if we really want triplexes and quadplexes to happen, it was important. Um, there are some voices saying it was important to allow those through a building permit review rather than requiring site plan review. Um, and although we talked with development engineering and we talked with our, you know, um. With folks in community development who have been great partners on this project. Um, the recommendation remains um that this type-one site plan review be required for triplexes and quadplexes. Um, but that there was interest to continue to further ex- further explore um refining those options. So in the future, perhaps there could be a more streamlined option, but right now. The recommendation was to keep with that type-one site plan review requirement, which, you know, as I said, is um easier than type-two. Go ahead. Thank you. This next one has to do with cottage orientation was really more of a refinement. Um, in the proposed code, there's, there's three options for how cottages can be oriented where their main entrances need to be located. The key piece is um having minimum of fifty percent of the cottages oriented towards the common open space. So. Um, this proposed site plan comes from Florence, Oregon. But a majority of these units, more than fifty percent, are located um oriented towards a common open space. So it would meet the standard. Um, but making sure it's fifty percent or more, and then the remaining can be oriented towards the street or a common pathway within the site. There's some confusion about how those would, how that was um going to be read. And so there's. Uh, whether they could overlap and and create some confusion. And so the refinement is just um. Clarifying that either cottages face the common open space and meet that minimum fifty percent, or alternatively. Um, up to fifty percent can face a street or a pathway. So just some, some clarification of the, of the language there. Next piece? Um, zero lot line development, this was really a cleanup. Um, right now, zero lot line is permitted as a review and approval use, which is an additional layer of review. So part of streamlining permit. Is these types of development, we're moving away from review and approval and towards permitting them outright. We just needed to make a a corresponding change in the um use table for the R1 zones. To fully reflect, reflect that move away from the RA review. Next please? Um, this is um for that compact development, as I mentioned. Um, the, there's a maximum site size of three acres proposed, which excludes critical areas and roadway improvements from that measurement. Um, that size was intended to target those smaller infill parcels, as I mentioned. Um, not intended to allow, you know, compact development for any property. Because that would essentially, you know, double develop or double the density for all properties. Without really significant um process. And so we um really had refined this three-acre number. These exclusions to get to, um, you know, to better reflect developable area, to better reflect developable area. Um, but we did have some additional questions during these forum meetings about, you know, could we eliminate that maximum site size? Or increase it or further re- um refine it? And um. As part of that discussion, there is no recommended change to that minimum site, to that maximum site size, excuse me. Um, and recommendation is to retain that three-acre size um rather than, you know, effectively upzoning the whole county. So next please? Um, and we did during our initial code development to arrive at that three-acre size, we had done some GIS work. Um, this map identifies um all the parcels that are zero point five to five acres in size. Um, the larger ones are in orange and the smaller ones in yellow. Uh, the question we are trying to answer with this map is, are there sites that are, you know, up to three acres? Um, that would be eligible to use these provisions? And is this a meaningful full site size? And so the answer that we came up with was yes, there are, um, you know, I think. The previous site says there's about three thousand of these sites or three thousand acres um that are eligible for this. And so that's why we are recommending to keep with the the three acres of develop, developable area as the maximum size. Um, for eligibility for the new compact lot option. Next please? And then the final code refinement question that we got um was an opportunity to take another look at the setbacks in the R110 zone. Um, with, right now, the R110 zone has um. Seven-foot side setback and a fifteen-foot rear setback. As you can see in the table, that um is di- it's different than the R120 with the larger lot sizes. And then the smaller lots um in the R17.5 and the R15 are all five-foot side and ten-foot rear. We had not initially proposed any changes um to the R1 setbacks here. Um, but we got a recommendation that the R110 setbacks could be reduced for a little bit more site flexibility. Um, to reflect the fact that the lot size is being proposed um to reduce to eighty-five hundred, eighty-five hundred square feet in the R110. Um, and given the changes to that lot size, we um. Did feel based on discussion with our forum members that we could recommend a reduction to the R110 setbacks so that they're the same as. Um, the other R17.5, R16, and R15 zones. So minor change that's included, that will be included in the next draft. And next slide please? Um, in terms of next steps, as I mentioned, we're working on a refined code draft that reflects these refinements. Um, for further review by county staff and um council. And then still working um in coordination with county staff um as well as legal counsel. To determine the preferred process to continue the hearing. Um, right now, we're looking for further input from council, your questions um specifically about. These issues raised today or other questions, concerns. Um, and then I'll also ask Susan if she'd like to share any further thinking um about how to continue the adoption process. I know there've been evolving conversations.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Uh, yeah, we don't, I don't think I have anything additional at this point unless any of the counselors have questions.
Also, I do want to open it up for questions of council. Uh, at first, I want to express my appreciation to Oliver and team. Elizabeth, great presentation. Uh, and I want to thank you for the additional work we asked you to do that you did accomplish. You know, there, I think the parking question is the, the biggest question for me after seeing all your. Your um refinements, the refinements are all super and certainly beyond my expertise to question. Uh, so I'm supportive of everything that you, you've come to at this point. Having said that, uh, we did receive additional input as we always do right on the eve of the meeting. Uh, not only from the uh building community, but. Um, we received some detailed input from Vancouver, the city of Vancouver planners. I don't know. If that was targeting completely this presentation of code changes or going back and really focusing on. Their comments to VBLM and other issues. But my point is, we just received all this additional comment. I haven't fully digested it. Uh, as we move forward in the process, despite the great work you've done. And the movement and modifications that you've suggested, I'm hoping that you can essentially go line by line at some point. Uh, to answer uh these recent inputs uh to the council. So in any case, uh, those are my general comments. I love the work you've done. I think it'll go a long way in opening up the aperture. Uh, and in increasing densities where it's appropriate. You know, your paragraph L that addressed the three acre as a retaining as a minimum, I think that's a good step. You know, three thousand additional sites according to GIS really answers the mail for allowing additional uh densities. In areas that probably can, that can accept it. You know, the, the model that Oregon followed. And I, now we've lost track of time, it was about two or three years ago, where there was a general outcry. Uh, because of the increased densities in existing neighborhoods uh that the public really didn't want. Uh, so we have to be mindful of that and be very careful that we don't ruin neighborhoods uh by increasing densities. So with all those comments, um, council, what are your questions or comments?
Chair, I have a couple of comments and questions.
Please.
Thank you. I, I would just echo the chair's uh gratitude. This is phenomenal work. Uh, and uh, it's really appreciated. You know, my overarching concern with all of this is the hope that housing could be more affordable. And there would be opportunities for first-time home buyers to enter into the market and build some equity. And I don't know that throughout the process. Affordability has been on the forefront of considering any, any of the changes, the driveways, the parking. How much that adds or it takes away from affordability. So I think there's still a lot of uncertainty. You know, it is the hope if you, you know, have more density and more options. That things will be more affordable. But I guess along those lines, since we really can't, well. If you have any input on, on how affordable this might make things, but I think ongoing, we should have some. Uh, measures to evaluate if we're on the right track, if this really is creating more options some for people. Does anyone have any comments related to that?
Well, I do too, but I, 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 please go ahead with yours, so.
Oh, okay. I was just thinking of the consultants or uh, uh, if, if. How much we might be assured that it's going to be affordable?
Yeah, Council Marshall, I could speak a little to that if you'd like.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Yeah, and I want to, you know, thank you for your continued focus on affordability because that is one of the key goals. Of the Housing Options Study and Action Plan, and that has been driving our, our code refinements. And, you know, just thinking back, I'm not sure I said the word affordable in the last forty-five minutes, and if so, I apologize because. Um, I think that just speaks to like how ingrained it is in the project, um, that it's just been part of our work. So a lot of these refinements, particularly on the design standards. Um, as well as the parking, those have been questions that we've been asking. And when I, I think what I did say a lot during this presentation is development feasibility. Um, and so that's really where we heard feedback that specifically on those design standards for the compact lots. That um relaxing some of the proposed design standards, changing that garage. Um, the limitation on the garage width. Um, to allow increased garage width relative to the home while still managing and balancing some of those conflicts. Um, that was identified as one of the priorities to make those homes more feasible to build at a more affordable price point. So that was one of the key refinements in this draft, um, uh, and these issues that we've reviewed. And the overall way that, you know, as you mentioned, that these code updates address affordability is helping bring. Um, those minimum lot sizes down, allowing more homes on um. The same amount of land and in different configurations. So the idea being that, you know, if you can do town, you know, townhouses in the, in a zone. Um, at greater densities, if you could do. at greater densities, if you could do cottages at twice the density and smaller sizes, that that helps, that that can speak to the affordability piece.
Great, thank you. I feel reassured. And then I do just have a couple of lingering concerns. I am concerned about how this fits in with existing neighborhoods, in particular the thirty five foot height for attached ADUs. And if within the code, if it's abutting an existing single family home, if there's could be some, some way to mitigate that or some places where it wouldn't be appropriate. Because I think that's one of the concerns, you wouldn't want to have something towering over over your backyard or your bedroom or whatever, especially with the setbacks being rather, rather small. So that's, that's a lingering concern that I have. And you know, the excluding the garage for the cottage, cottage homes. To to me, that no longer makes it a cottage home. If if it can be sixteen hundred square feet, that's, that's a regular home, you know, three bedroom home in my mind, if it was a thousand or twelve hundred. That and 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 excluded the garage, that would be, I think, more reasonable. But I think sixteen hundred square feet and excluding the garage is just, it's no longer a cottage home in my mind. But, you know, really, all of that said, I think this is something I'm hoping will move forward. I think we can wrangle about details kind of forever. But it's, I think it's very, it's critical really that it move forward and we provide that affordability as soon as we can. So thanks again.
Other councillors?
Yes, I'd like to go back to the affordability issue again. That's a hard one to leave. One of the things that we have focused on as a council is what are some of the codes and and permits and so on that could be changed or would be changed that would allow for greater affordability of housing? And I wondered if you could, if this is not a formidable task, but if if it's a, if it's a relatively easy task, just list from the changes that you have proposed, what are some of the code and permit changes that would allow for greater affordability? We, I think that would give us an understanding of where we for sure want to be able to support or not, depending on its impact on affordability. And we know that's something that is of great concern to our constituents as well because of not really knowing intuitively on their own part, unless they're builders maybe. What are the impacts of code changes or permit changes on the affordability of housings? What, what if it does allow for greater density? So, and so the those kinds of questions, I think, are are lingering. And that that would be helpful if it's not a formidable task to list those things.
Yeah, councillor, is that something you'd like me to try to speak to now or to come back at our next meeting to with more of a?
For me, it would be at our next meeting when we can see the overview a little bit better.
Yeah, that's something that we can work on. I'll work with staff on that. You know, I think that we'll find some ways to frame it, but just to keep in mind, there are some code things that, you know, we have pretty, you know, a direct sense, like reducing the site plan review from a type two to a type one. We know that that immediately translates to savings because there's less review fees by the county. There's less what they call soft costs for the developers to prepare the application. So that's a clear affordability piece. There are some other pieces.
What would be the dollar change there? That would be.
Yes, we can definitely bring that back. Right, so there's that category, but then I guess I wanted to also speak that. And, you know, if we bring this back in written format, we'll discuss more. But that a lot of these changes create more opportunities. And those really aren't within our purview to calculate, you know, what they may or may not be because it opens up more opportunities for developers to choose. Do they choose to develop under this compact lot and have more homes that, you know, have less lot area per home and therefore ostensibly would be sold for lower prices? That's the intention. We can't necessarily calculate it at this phase, but we can, you know, sort of outline what some of those enhanced opportunities would be.
Thank you.
Chair, I have a comment. Elizabeth, thank you for the work specifically on the driveways. I've gotten a lot of constituent feedback on the driveways, the limitations, I should say, on driveways. So I was really happy to see the different changes on that. Question, the the shared parking that you, the shared parking spot, how does that? How does that work? How would that work to give? I guess, how would the people that live in the cottage housing, I mean, how, how? I guess I'm having a hard time envisioning how that works.
Yes, thanks councillor. So there's, making sure that I understand your questioning. There's at least two places that we're talking about shared parking. So there's with cottage developments, there's an option to have shared parking areas as a, or private garages. And then there's also on the narrow lots, which are going to be those townhouses and smaller, single family detached and more of a a street orientation. There is the proposed requirement to have both off-street parking for each dwelling and some shared off-street or shared parking. So are you interested in one or both of those issues?
Both of those.
Great. I mean, I could talk about parking all day, but I want to make sure that I'm directly addressing all of your interests.
Yeah, you don't have, you don't have to go on for, I'm just, I'm curious because it has been literally, I've gotten peppered with emails about this in particular.
Oh, I'm, well, I'm glad to hear what's of interest so that we can address that. And hopefully you can help your constituents understand as well. So as far as the the cottage housing goes, the recommended code does not have specific guest parking requirements. It has a recommended requirement of one parking space per cottage. And there's flexibility about how that can be provided. That can either, again, that's a minimum, so some cottages may have more parking. But it can be provided as private garages with each cottage. So that's where the amendment to how the floor area for cottages is measured and how how that comes into the the equation that some folks feel that excluding, anyways, adding more flexibility to add those private garages enhances the the feasibility of that option. But the other option for cottages, cottage developments, is to have a shared parking area where that one where the spaces are met in an area, say, around the perimeter or in one corner of the property. That site plan I shared from Florence, for example, had that clustered parking. And so that is, it is not public parking, right? It's not on-street parking, it is off-street parking. The development could choose to say mark each of those spaces for, you know, this belongs to this cottage, this one belongs to this cottage. They could choose to have some guest spaces. It would really be up to them as long as they met the minimum of one space per cottage. It would need to be off-street, but there's just flexibility about how it's arranged on the cottage site itself. And we're not really proposing changes to those options, the garages or the off-street parking, those minimums stay the same. Where we've certainly heard, heard feedback has to do with the parking requirements for the narrow lots. And these are going to affect the com, the proposed compact lot option as well as existing narrow lots. Any lot that's forty feet or less in width. And so the existing standard is for those two point five spaces that can be any combination of off-street parking, on-street parking, including there's a special narrow, narrow streets provision that allows like angled spaces that lets you fit more on-street parking in. That's an option as well as technically, the code allows creation of these offs, off-street, so sort of mini private parking lots. As far as I know, that that isn't a very popular option, right? We've certainly heard feedback that says, why would we use a lot for parking when we could use it for a house, right? This is a housing project, it's not a parking project. And so, yes, you know, that's an option that's offered. We don't expect that to be the most popular, it certainly hasn't been to date. We're not trying to force, the code is not trying to force anyone to build an off-street parking lot that they don't want. So I, what we would expect the most popular option to be with the proposal to, in these narrow lots, to require two off-street spaces per home and one shared space per three. So it's not the idea that those three homes specifically have to share that space. It's just a ratio to make sure that there is some minimum provision of on-street publicly available parking for folks that are coming in to visit folks or the Amazon delivery truck, you know, to pull over to the side of the road. That just helps get the cars, you know, off the street, make sure that emergency vehicle access, that the streets are clear, that there's ways to get through. We heard a lot of concerns about that, that if there's no on-street parking, visitors come, people have parties and there's just cars everywhere blocking the street and it causes a lot of enforcement concerns. And so that requirement, the the one per three, again, could be met with an off-street parking area. I wouldn't personally expect, based on the feedback we've heard, to that to be the most popular. So it's really trying to make sure there's some amount of on-street parking that is provided to to help serve you know, day-to-day use in those areas. Does that help clarify?
Yes, thank you, Elizabeth. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you councillor.
Other questions or comments? So I, I don't know, Oliver, if you need thumbs up on some of these issues. I mean, what I perceived from the briefing was, at least on that parking, which you just addressed, that was one of the the questions that I think you wanted guidance from the council. But I'm not clear on that and what other issues you may need. I personally do favor all the changes that you're proposing. These refinements are a good step forward. I have no objection to excluding garages for the cottages. I have no objection to raising the height to thirty five feet. We're going to get complaints everywhere in certain circumstances. We're not going to satisfy everyone, but I I tend to want to open this aperture and I tend, you know, I I don't want neighbors telling neighbors what they can do and or not do with their property to a certain extent. So these design restrictions, you know, I I would tend to want to steer away from and let the market dictate, you know, we we want affordability. And the one area that I don't want to spend time on, but maybe in the future when you you address some of the affordability issues on what these changes are going to do. I mean, there's not a whole lot of discussion of what the state's doing. You know, from insulation requirements to appliance requirements, to HVAC requirements. Quite frankly, that adds significant cost to every single home in the state. And it doesn't get enough discussion. You know, it, there, it, some of these changes are counterintuitive if you want to keep affordability at a price point where more people can afford. So anyway, I I do favor for those narrow lots, the the two spaces plus a shared space for every three, as you last outlined, I think that's a good accommodation. I guess the only question I had about these parking issues, regardless of whether it's a compact lot or a narrow lot, do we have any different rules for those developments that may be for senior living? Where they may not have cars as 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 much? Or those focused around I don't want to say rapid transit, but our buses do a pretty good job. You know, public transit, do we have different rules for these developments where we may not need as much parking? But, you know, the bottom line is, I don't want our our rural neighborhoods to look like downtown cities. And we certainly approach that if we eliminate parking. So I like, anyway, Oliver, what what do you need from us today as far as guidance on any of these issues?
Councillor, Chair, thank you very much. I think we've heard from the council about your support. The, the sipper that we did for this project is so broad that I don't think that some of these changes would require us to do another sipper. Having said that, I believe that the the height for the A D U going from twenty five to thirty five and some of the changes that are proposed, called a refinement that we have proposed on in the R one ten and R one twenty. I don't think had a lot of discussion at the P C. I know the height came up, but I don't think they had any deliberation on that one word or the other. So my recommendation or my input would be if council believe that we can go to hearing with the council because that's where this matter is now. And do a legal notice and have everyone come in and review the proposed code and provide you input and then have you met go through and listen to everyone and and adopt these changes. That is the direction we are seeking from council. We can set up a, a, a date for a hearing with the council or you can direct us to go back to the planning commission for any of this reason, to have additional hearing and make a recommendation to you. But either way, I am confident that even if we go back to the planning commission, we will not have to redo the sipper that we issued because I think it was broad enough to cover some of these changes. I am concerned about the height, but we are discussing it now and it could also come up at the hearing. Some of the question you asked about impact or how these changes could really be beneficial because I I agree, Elizabeth, having really focused on talking about housing affordability, but I know why, because some of these changes, whether it is in the review type now going from type two to type three, yes, that will reduce costs and time. Some of this, we don't know, but as we see the buildings or the development occurring, you will agree that reducing the housing footprint could also reduce the square footage cost thereby reducing the cost for relating to housing affordability. But we wouldn't know that, it will likely take us about a year or two before we know how these changes, seeing what is happening on the ground and what impact that is having. But this is an opportunity to provide a variety of housing type. We haven't really moved into the multi-family district to look at what additional changes might be made. And for example, we don't have that. The only major transit corridor we have is Highway ninety nine. And we haven't looked at what other changes can be made in that corridor as we begin to look at multi-family district. So I will stop there. If you'd like us to go to a hearing, we will schedule one and give the public opportunity to review the draft before your hearing.
Thank you, Oliver. I do support moving forward. But does any other councillor wish to move forward or send it back? Or certain issues, send it back. I see one other thumbs up.
Move forward.
Well, I I have, I have a comment. I I say move forward, but I do very much like Chair your suggestion about if the parking requirements might be modified for senior living or transit oriented development. And and maybe that's the next, maybe that's partly the transit oriented development, the next step with multi-family. But I think I would, I would be supportive of the. But I think I would, I would be supportive of the hearing and if we can modify the parking requirement if if it's not needed.
Super. And and I don't know that they haven't discussed that already, but I did see Oliver nodded his head yes. Sounds like we have a uniformity, Oliver, to move forward to a public hearing. Anything further on this? Because we do have another work session. All right. Thank you so much, Elizabeth, for that briefing. Very, oh, that was super. Does anyone need a break to before we move on?
Thank you, counselors.